Be it resolved that this regular meeting now open at 6:00 P. M.
Moved by Councilor Bajelli, seconded by Councilor McDonald. All in favor? Motion is carried.
Be it resolved that the agenda be approved as presented. Moved by Councilor Shane, seconded by Councilor Bajelli.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion is carried. Moving to item three, the adoption. Sorry, we did that. Is there any disclosure of community interest? Seeing none. Thank you. Moving on to delegation presentation tonight. So I would like to welcome Stephanie Miller to come up on behalf of the CSPA and Humane Society. Welcome.
With my colleague Rob Hunter, Development Officer for Eastern Region of the Ontario SPCA. I understand that we have hard copies of our presentation for your viewing this evening. And as I go through the presentation, I will suggest next page. And I recognize you have the presentations in advance. So how I'm going to spend our time together today is just to walk us through high level with some additional information, because I would like to leave some time at the end for any questions that you may have. So if you'd like to move on to the first page, today's purpose, which I've just highlighted, we can move on to the next page. For over 150 years, the Ontario SPCA and Humane Society has provided care, comfort, and compassion to animals in need across the province. As a registered provincial charity, we proudly operate without any annual government funding. And all of our work is possible primarily through donor support. Currently, we have 12 animal centers across the province where we deliver vital programs and services to support animals and those who love them. And for more than 70 years, we have served the Cornwall region at our current animal center location on Boundary Road. The SD&amp;G Animals Center's catchment area is very large and includes the communities of Aquasasne, Cornwall, the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry, as well as the United Counties of Prescott and Russell. Next page. So in terms of our animal center in Cornwall and the overall community impact for all of those communities that we serve, it was important for us to highlight some significant impact that our volunteers and staff have had in the community in 2024. And since 2023, some additional information that I'd like to share, we are finding animal intakes right across the province are significantly increasing. So for example, intakes from owner surrenders and strays just here in our Cornwall region has nearly doubled since 2023, from 223 animals to 454, we anticipate by the end of 2024. We're seeing a very similar trend provincially. For example, the need for basic veterinary care has risen sharply with a 184% increase in people coming to us seeking assistance.
Be it resolved that the agenda be approved as presented, moved by Counselor Shane, seconded by Counselor Bajelli.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none. All in favor. Motion is carried. Moving to item three, the adoption. Sorry, we did that. Is there any disclosure of community interest? Seeing none. Thank you. Moving on to delegation presentation tonight. So I would like to welcome Stephanie Miller to come up on behalf of the CSPA and Humane Society. Welcome.
With my colleague, Rob Hunter, Development Officer for Eastern Region of the Ontario SPCA. I understand that we have hard copies of our presentation for your viewing this evening. And as I go through the presentation, I will suggest next page. And I recognize you have the presentations in advance. So how I'm going to spend our time together today is just to walk us through high level with some additional information, because I would like to leave some time at the end for any questions that you may have. So if you'd like to move on to the first page, today's purpose, which I've just highlighted, we can move on to the next page. For over 150 years, the Ontario SPCA and Humane Society has provided care, comfort, and compassion to animals in need across the province. As a registered provincial charity, we proudly operate without any annual government funding. And all of our work is possible primarily through donor support. Currently, we have 12 animal centers across the province where we deliver vital programs and services to support animals and those who love them. And for more than 70 years, we have served the Cornwall region at our current animal center location on Boundary Road. The SD&amp;G Animal Center's catchment area is very large and includes the communities of Aquasosni, Cornwall, the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry, as well as the United Counties of Prescott and Russell. Next page. So in terms of our animal center in Cornwall and the overall community impact for all of those communities that we serve, it was important for us to highlight some significant impact that our volunteers and staff have had in the community in 2024. And since 2023, some additional information that I'd like to share, we are finding animal intakes right across the province are significantly increasing. So for example, intakes from owner surrenders and strays just here in our Cornwall region has nearly doubled since 2023, from 223 animals to 454, we anticipate by the end of 2024. We're seeing a very similar trend provincially. For example, the need for basic veterinary care has risen sharply with a 184% increase in people coming to us seeking assistance. So to meet these growing needs, we continue to provide support through adoptions to help animals find their new families. We provide affordable spay-neuter services that prevent thousands of unplanned litters, and including a recent neuter-scooter program that we have been piloting in Eastern Region where 534 animals were spay or neutered just from the Cornwall region alone in 2024. As well, right across the province, in 2024, the SPCA supported families by distributing more than 800,000 pounds of pet food, and 10% of this help benefited families in this region alone. And we anticipate the needs are going to continue to rise. We can move on to the next page, please. So in terms of impact, direct impact for the residents of North Stormont, we felt it was important to share a few highlights that we have been recognizing at the animal center. So for example, in 2024, our data indicates that there were seven animals adopted by families who reside in North Stormont. And equally, we had seven families come to us seeking assistance to rehome their animals. And in the first six months alone of 2025, five animals have been adopted into loving homes to families that reside here in the community. In terms of access to veterinary services for residents, overall, 95% of stray animals that arrive at our animal center in Cornwall are not fixed. And we do know in 2024, four residents of North Stormont that we supported animals with spay or neuter surgeries, preventing future 100 offspring. So we recognize that there is significant opportunity for us to more proactively inform and engage residents of the township about the work that we do and how together we can support pets and people. So for example, we, throughout 2025, for the remainder of 2025, are open to having conversations around hosting microchip clinics. Humane education presentations for any elementary students and elementary programming, as well as parvo and vaccination clinics are all still possible for the remainder of this year and certainly can be part of our conversation for continued partnership as we move forward. We're part of this community. We're woven into the fabric of pets and people. And we know there's so much more that we can be doing together to provide a safe haven for pets and a safe community for those who live here. Move on to the next slide, or the next page, if you will. So we felt it was important to highlight what we're seeing as a provincial animal welfare charity and what we're seeing in the animal care sector in terms of a crisis developing right across the province. I'm not going to get into the significant points here, but I will highlight that what we are seeing provincially is a 23% increase in the number of cats coming into our care. This is year over year already. A 25% increase in the number of dogs coming into our care, and an overall 31% increase from the same time last year of individuals seeking to rehome their animals. And because they've had to make that difficult choice, that they're no longer able to care for them financially. And after we exhaust all of the opportunities that we have to provide them assistance, they still continue to make that heartbreaking decision that the pet is better to be rehomed to another family. We found that during the pandemic, there was a significant surge in pets arriving into new families. And what we're experiencing now, combination of the skyrocketing veterinary costs, a dramatic shortage of veterinarians and veterinary technicians, is making access to affordable care even harder for those in Ontario. Economic hardships, including widespread housing and food insecurity, only adds to the strain. So if you move to the next page, we recognize that local concerns do align with the broader provincial reality because we are experiencing these same issues locally here in our Cornwall catchment area. Stray animals, disease management, the safety of people when animals are unwell, are all lived experiences that are faced by our community members daily, and challenges that you, as municipal leaders, I can imagine, encounter on a daily basis as well. We can take meaningful actions together to help mitigate these concerns. If we move on to the next page, this is where I'd like to highlight some of the key issues for the current animal center that we have on Boundary Road. And this, which brings us to our time-sensitive and critical new building that we are planning to undergo. As a charitable organization with strong oversight and responsibility for stewardship of donor support, we understand the needs of the community and our responsibility to address them. Recognizing that the current center faces serious unresolvable issues, our board and leadership team in 2023 carefully evaluated all of the options and determined that constructing a new center is the best solution to support the community. Our new facility will not only address today's critical needs, but will also be designed to meet future community needs and demands for decades to come. And most excitedly, for the first time in the region, in Eastern Region, we are going to be introducing an Ontario SPCA-led veterinary clinic modeled after our clinics that currently operate in Barry and Stovall. This will help to augment and support the services that are already provided by our region's veterinary community. If you move on to the next page, gives you a very brief visual of the new animal center and veterinary clinic. Our plans are to open January 1st, 2027. We are working with Daimling Architecture. They've been selected for the project. And Grant Mirion, a local builder, will be overseeing the construction. And we anticipate construction will start to occur on property within the next two weeks. Our groundbreaking on the property at 2,003 Second Street will be on October the 17th. We will share those details because we would love it if you're able to attend. The new building has been designed in consultation with our chief veterinary officer, who is also a member of our leadership team, to ensure that the new build adheres to all the established standards and best practices of veterinary care. The building is designed with maximum functionality, efficiency, and practicality in ensuring a lasting and effective facility for many, many years to come. Moving on to the next slide or the next page, this gives you a visual of the footprint of the animal center. It'll be 6,600 square feet in total, increasing our current capacity from being able to house comfortably 24 animals to 57. Put simply, the center is bigger, smarter in design, and will allow us to care for more animals in a way that's more efficient and humane. Let me give you an example of how good design is going to make a difference. Currently, when a diseased animal enters our care, we often have to close the center to the public and to any new animals coming into our care because we lack sufficient and safe quarantine space. The building that we are in was built, I'm going to say approximately 50 years ago. So you can imagine what worked well 50 years ago does not work well in 2025. So this means any all new incoming animals and any services that we offer to the public from our current location must be paused whenever a sick or contagious animal comes into our care. This is a limitation that this new building will resolve. If you move on to your next page, this is a brief snapshot of the new veterinary clinic. And this is going to be a game changer for the community. Approximately 1,400 square feet in total, this will help to augment and support veterinary care for the animals in our care. That said, in the future, we will also be in a position to be able to support the community with accessible and affordable veterinary services. We have met with members of the local veterinary community. Most recently, at an open house, we invited them to come and visit with us and spend some time with us at our current location. And they are all receptive, supportive, and really excited and behind this project. The clinic, as I mentioned, is intended to operate in its first year for the animals in our care. And by year three, as part of our current business plan, we expect to significantly increase our ability to provide accessible veterinary care to the community. So with that said, I'm now pleased to pass it over to Rob, who will continue to highlight our plans to make this a reality. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's great to be here this evening. Thank you for allowing us to be a delegation. I'd like to talk to you about the Build a Brighter Future for Pets and People campaign. As you can see, this project, if you've already turned over to that slide, that next slide, page 12, the total cost of the project's an $8 million project. So it's a major project. It's very ambitious. It's bold. But it's also extremely critical to the animals and the communities that we serve. This campaign certainly represents a unique, one-time philanthropic opportunity that's going to really make a lasting impact. When you heard, you know, the building that we're currently in is 50 years old, it just does not meet the needs of the animals. This building will, and the addition of a vet clinic is going to be extraordinary. We've committed, the Ontario SPCA and Humane Society's committed $4 million to the project, and which means that we need to raise an additional $4 million to make this vision become a reality. If you could flip over to the next slide, please. Just wanted to highlight that, you know, the fundraising plan that we've put together has been really built and informed by working with folks in the region, both a very good mixture of people from rural areas, urban areas, and also including First Nations, which of course is very important, given that we service Aquasosni. If you could flip over to the next page, please. So here we are. Brings us to tonight, a critical time as we start moving forward with this project. The building, simply, as I said, cannot meet our needs. And we're here to make a once-in-a-lifetime request to the township for some philanthropic support. We're inviting the township of North Stormont to help support the new build in the amount of $15,000. But knowing constraints of municipal budgets, having worked for a few municipalities myself, we've broken that down into five annual installments of $3,000 to help with, like I said, budgetary constraints. The support of the township would be critical to us and critical to the animals in our care. And I think that it would really help inspire others in the community and through SD&amp;G to get behind the project. Next slide, please. So we're certainly happy to take any questions that Mayor and Council have.
Thank you very much for the presentation. So I will just go down and see if there's any questions from members of the council, starting with Counselor McDonald.
Just wanted to thank you for the presentation and also for the work that you guys do. And we've had to interact, obviously, with the SPCA, growing up on a farm. And not everyone is, you know, comfortable to let animals like cats and dogs that appear on the farm just sort of be out in the wild. And unfortunately, my mom had to deal with 15 cats this summer. And trying to get 15 cats spayed and neutered is not something financially that, you know, anyone can really handle. So we were able to get access to different types of clinics, like these types of little things for people when they're facing either an animal that's injured and that they're trying to get help for. Like, it's just, it's invaluable in that moment. So I know it's something that I personally really support the work you do. And I know a lot of our residents are supportive and would benefit from this new facility. So I think it's a very interesting proposal. I'm glad that, you know, you've got a great team with Rob as well backing you up. And I think it's probably something that has to be considered at budget time. But I like the proposal that you've made and how you've made it a smaller and drawn-out installment plan. Might be something that's more manageable. So just thank you for the presentation, and I think you did a good job.
I just want to echo the sentiment there. Thank you for what you do. It's important in the community. The other thing I'd make you aware of is there are a number of groups, community groups in our area who do fundraisers for not-for-profit entities. There's a Ladies' Night, there's 100 People Who Care, and things like that that you can apply to present at. So if you're not already aware of that, I'm happy to connect you with some of those groups as well. And that's something that I know they're always looking for people to participate and be potential recipients of their hard work as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you, everyone, for the presentation. The work that you do is critical. We've seen, I've seen firsthand the building in Cornwall. It's quite clear that the SPCA has outgrown its current location there, based on the service needs of the area. And I think the service that you provide, too, over the last few years has and will continue to increase. And we all talk about the cost of living increases for us, everyday user fees, things like that that we see. But we often forget how that trickle-down affects. Really, some of the first to be tougher would be things like family pets and having to make that decision where, you know, we have families that are struggling going to a food bank. Well, that also applies to them trying to get access to dog food. So again, thank you for the work you do. Happy to consider this when it does come in front of us.
Also, it's great work these guys do. It's clearly needed. Anybody who's on our town Facebook groups, there are so many loose cats and dogs running around. I don't know if you ever hear. But yes, I like the way you've broken it down for a future budget for some friends to consider. I did have one question was, in three years, you're looking at serving affordable veterinary for the public. You're not for profit, but would this be something where you'll charge at least enough to help bring back to support your building?
That's a very good question. And that's possible as part of the business plan. When we recommend, it's going to be about three years, we're taking into consideration an opportunity for us to get up and running. We will need to hire a veterinarian for this new facility, as well as veterinarian techs, volunteers. Our focus will be the animals in our care first, and then we will be rolling it out to the community. And there are two different models, possibly three different models that we'd be looking at. There could be some subsidized opportunity for donors and funders to help support, offset the cost for the community, hence why we will be planning for into year three, could be possibly earlier. But we're looking at all those possibilities, yes. A great opportunity for donors. Donors love this type of support philanthropically, when they know that they can help support families in need by covering the cost.
So I guess maybe part questions I was just going to ask as far as the private care that you're going to do. So right now, you're looking at this funding to go towards the build of this building?
Correct.
So moving forward, where do you anticipate the funds to maintain that? Is this clinic going to be partly the, try to be self-sustained to operate with the veterinary clinic that's in there?
The veterinary clinic will certainly generate some revenue. That said, we are a charity, so all of our operations are pretty well funded solely by donor support. So the animal center currently and its operations are solely funded by donor support. So moving forward, that will remain the same. The operations of the center will be donor-supported, and it'll be same with the clinic as well. There'll be some community revenue from the services, but it's not enough for us to operate. And yeah.
And is it going to be your building where you would lease to a veterinarian or partnership with them? Is that?
No, that's not. At this time, the plan is for the clinic to be, like I mentioned, Ontario SPCA-led. So it'll be our property, our clinic. And we will have our own staff, our own veterinarian and staff to run and operate so that they can follow our protocols. We work very closely with the veterinary community in and around the area. That will continue. But it'll be modeled after our clinic in Barry and Stovall.
And I'm sure a nice building like this is more suitable for, to bring more people in, I think would be, would be great. One last question. As far as fundraising, so I have a household that truly believes in supporting your cause. I think it was done maybe four years ago. I believe it was by phone. But I'm not sure if this is going to the Humane Society, like globally, as in Ontario, or if it's directed to the local dollars. So I'll check when I come home, but maybe you have the answer. So would my dollars be going to you guys?
That's a good question. So all of the funds raised for this campaign will stay local and will be used to build this project. And any funds that we raise locally for the local SPCA does stay in this community. It's 100% supports the community. As a provincial charity, any unrestricted donor revenue that we receive does help to offset any support that's needed for any of our 12 animal centers or clinics. So first and foremost, the fundraising stays here locally, and then it's offset from any provincial unrestricted fundraising.
Oh, looking through, like I said, I'm just wondering if my monthly credit card donation, I'm not sure if it's going to the...
You know what? And I'm happy to check in with you offline. That's the team that I lead. That's my area. So definitely can look into that for you. Our donors do have an option to designate their donations locally or to an area program that is of interest to them. So definitely, we can look at that for you.
Thank you very much.
Rest assured, any funds raised for this project and this campaign will be going directly to support this build. Yes.
Perfect. Thank you very much. As mentioned, so it will be a budget deliberation that will, but the fact that you did break it down will make it, because of comments made by Counselor Bajelli. Food banks are a big part as well that are, and it's now where we allocate. But the message has been, I think you've got our attention, and I appreciate very much for your delegation.
Thank you for having us this evening for the thoughtful questions. And we are available moving forward if there's any additional questions. And look forward to sharing the updates with the community as we move forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So moving on to the adoption of our previous meeting's minutes.
Be it resolved that the following minutes be approved as presented. Regular meeting, August 12, 2025 minutes. Moved by Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Shane.
Any discussions on our previous minutes? Seeing none. All in favor. Motion is carried. Next is the receiving of our monthly staff reports and recommendations.
Be it resolved, the following monthly reports be received by law enforcement, building, fire, recreation, public works, and the CAO. Moved by Counselor Shane, seconded by Counselor Bajelli.
Any questions in regards to our staff reports? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Dencham.
No, just, well, a comment and a question. First, I'm looking at the rec report and the grant application. So there's a lot of grant applications out there, which is fantastic. It's good to see us looking for money to support those. Quick question. When we look at those, we're clear on who is looking after, say, the grant match fee or if it's a percentage? It's the rec group that are generally, that wasn't highlighted in here. So I'm kind of assuming that the recs are looking after the costs or matching element on those?
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Counselor McDonald.
It's not a question, but for the fire department and for Nancy Ann and the team. The day that the tractor trailer went into the house in Chrysler, I had walked into the store, bought a sandwich, walked out of the store, and there was a tractor trailer in a house. And I stood there and I made some quick phone calls. And it felt like only minutes passed by, and the fire trucks were there. So I couldn't believe how quickly people were able to respond. I saw firefighters kind of running out with their boots and their stuff, like out of their homes and things. And I thought, you know, I was standing there. Should I walk over and try to offer my basic first aid? Oh, my God, what am I going to do? I don't even know how to use a fire extinguisher. And calling Frank and calling Craig. But the firefighters were there so fast. So I just was so impressed. And I think you guys deserve, you do it every time, I'm sure. But to see it happening live in front of my face was just really impressive. And I know it's all volunteers. So just kudos to you guys. And made everyone in the community feel safe, like things were under control, took control of the situation immediately. And yeah, it's fantastic. And the amount of like panic that was happening, everyone, you guys were so calm. So thank you so much for the work you do.
Thank you. I'll relay the messages.
And on the same subject, so when you say it did also happen just shy of noon on a Monday. So to have, all our firefighters are guys that do have their regular day jobs and try to support. So again, it just shows the team that Chief Guti has is well appreciated. On that same note, we are looking at one vehicle accident, but there's a lot of calls that have come through in the last month, from structure to car fires to... But there's a lot of calls that have come through in the last month from, from structure to car fires to, and just to relate back to the so-called drought, the burn ban. So things were dry out, I'm not relating specific to that. But it does get whether it's, it's a strike of lightning, whether we've got our forest fires. So it is something that we appreciate the patience of our residents in regards to the water ban. That does help with, with fighting our fires as well as putting the burn ban on. So I appreciate, I think we've released a little bit for recreational, but anyways, just hang in there. I think we're coming to, to the tail end hopefully of the, of this dry season. Any other questions in regards to staff reports? Seeing none, all in favor of accepting the reports, motion is carried. Item 9.2 in regards to the road naming bylaw.
That the council of the township of North Stormont receives and accepts report number BLW 02-2025. From the bylaw officer regarding the proposed road naming bylaw, the council confirms the names of roads and streets within the township of North Stormont as outlined in the proposed bylaw. And furthermore, council rescinds bylaw number 43-03 in its entirety. Moved by Councilor Shane, seconded by Councilor Bajelli.
Thank you, any questions or comment? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Dencham.
I read the report and the entire bylaw, but there's only one change, right? That's happening. And do we see more on the horizon, or is this basically all that we expect to see in terms of road name changes?
I took the lead on this because Rhodes Department was really swamped, and I helped out his department. But at the end of the day, they're gonna be reoccurring changes as projects move on, and that's what we're looking on. So the bylaw should be coming, if I'm not mistaken, Blake can confirm that. But the bylaw will be coming as we progress with projects and so forth and new development.
Thank you for doing that. And, and I guess just continue to let us know if it's just one or two, and I don't necessarily have to read the whole bylaw through just to try to detect changes on it.
Okay, we'll do.
And if I can just add to that, I'd like to add a little, in regards to Elian Street, that is one street that was added on the, on the new subdivision that's taken place. There is also Armstrong Patterson and La Rock that have been switched over. They are dedicated as public roads. And I'm just wondering, the fact that it's our property, it's, I know there's no houses presently on it, so we're not being as affected for emergency calls or stuff. But the fact that it's in our name and it's dedicated already as a road, should we not be adding them to the bylaw?
The, it's not dedicated as a road yet.
If the plan is registered and the subdivision agreement is, it's stated right on that those roads are dedicated to the?
Oh, that's news to me.
Yeah, like I said, the fact that there's no houses, but they are, if you read the, the plan, they are, the minute that it takes registration, the lawyers would. Anyway.
I wanted to do that, but I didn't know that they were dedicated, same as, as some other roads like the French subdivision.
Which will be coming up shortly, so it's something just for future to maybe allocate. Did you wanna add something to that?
No, just to reiterate what the fire chief said, we'll be bringing this forward on a regular basis, and we'll be a bit more proactive to make sure that the, the list is, continues to be up to date.
Any other questions regarding the? Go ahead, Blake.
Another reason we worked on this was so we can send this to the counties, and they can have the official road name, like we did with our road signs. That there's no confusion whenever they have to do a sign replacement and have any, so it should be a lot better to send the most current road name bylaw to them. Cause they're signing side roads on the townships.
So I'm glad you brought that up. So the fact that they are signing road names off the county road, which is their responsibility for our side roads. I think it was brought up to our attention that there's two or three that are either misspelled or which could cause issues with our emergency respond teams. So with this all being nice and clear, maybe that's something to take advantage and get the counties to get those altered. Thank you, any further questions? Councilor McDonnell.
I was just gonna say that I, like, I wasn't clear on what was changed, so I was having trouble understanding if it was an all new bylaw, if there was an old bylaw being amended. Was a bunch of things put into one document. I think I had sent a question on Sunday, asking if there was a red line version, but it must've slipped your inbox and slipped my mind, so I forgot to follow up.
I, my apologies, the old bylaw was dated, very dated, and there was a lot of newer information. We've modernized it, we've updated the legislation with Blake and, and his staff. So there was multiple changes to this bylaw, so you can consider it almost a new bylaw, Councilor, at this point because of the changes made. There were, there were no, the names of the roads haven't, it's just the entire structure and content and legislative piece that changes.
For the content, if maybe moving forward, cause with growth, it's gonna come more of a regular, so maybe to identify a red line or the changes versus having to relook at the whole, at the whole bylaw. Thank you very much. So in, all in favor of the bylaw motion or accepting it, motion is carried. Moving on to our municipal drain, Earl McMillan Improvement Request.
That the council of the township of North Stormont accepts and approves the request from Brester Farms Limited for improvements to the Earl McMillan Municipal Drain. And that the council of the township of North Stormont directs administration to send the required notices and begin the process to appoint Shade Group Inc. Under section 78.1 of the Drainage Act, to update the Earl McMillan Municipal Drain Engineers Report. Moved by Councilor Bajelli, seconded by Councilor Shane.
Thank you, so Sean is here with us. Are you comfortable, Sean, maybe for the people listening in and even members of council, just to give us a brief overview of, of the request by Mr. Brester?
Absolutely, through the chair. The farmers have asked to make improvements to their farm operations, in this sense, more efficiency. So by eliminating the open ditch that runs through their farm, they're able to, I guess, improve their operations, gain a little bit of farmable land at the same time. While maintaining drainage upstream. It's a, something we're starting to see more often. It's not as common, buried drains, but they are surfacing more and more with large equipment. So it's an improvement that benefits basically them solely, which is also why they're requesting this and on the hook for all improvement costs, like engineering, construction. Unless another landowner requests improvements during this public process. So it's, it's actually within the same field where we did an improvement last year on the Utterkirk Municipal Drain. So now it'll be one massive field as opposed to having multiple drains cut it up.
Any questions? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Dencham.
This may have been in the report, but I can't remember. Does this have, I know the proponent is absorbing all of the costs for, for making this, but does this have any downstream costs for users of that drain other than the proponent? At any point in time in, in terms of future maintenance and those types of things?
Excellent question. Part of the, part of maintaining an enclosed pipe system is no doubt different than an open ditch, and that's what, something that the engineer would take into account. And have a proper assessment schedule breakdown specific to this section. So it's kind of a more complex calculation that would have the cost of maintaining an open ditch versus an enclosure. And that increased cost goes to the landowner. Not to mention future replacement of the pipe, which would hopefully be very far down the road, would be primarily at the landowner's expense as well.
So not a significant change, if any, to anybody down, downstream of the drain?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilor McDonnell.
It's something that I think I brought up the last time, maybe we talked about enclosures, but I mean, there's not a lot of floodplain mapping for a lot of the rural farmland, and it's hard to know what the flows are like. I, I don't have an issue with appointing Shade Group and the rest of it. I just do think over time, if we enclose too many of these features, there probably will be impacts. I do like the idea that they're gonna have that overland swale to like catch anything that's excessive. But I think I've heard in southwestern Ontario, they're starting to like reopen some of those features back up because they're having issues. So I just, I think we're starting to get into enclosing municipal drains, and I'm nervous about how it's gonna work with climate change. I know the dire road was, things weren't established, but we saw that, just the intensity of the storm that blew through. And what that could do to either upstream, downstream, or those pipes. So I think it's a, it's something that a landowner can ask for, can pay for, but I think we need to realize that long term is probably not the smartest idea to do everywhere. Maybe there's areas upstream, like upper catchment's okay, but some of the lower catchment is gonna be probably problematic, but just comments.
And if, anything moving forward, so the liability, does it always stay with the proponent that is doing the work? Or does the overall drain take on those costs once it's been all approved in regards to that enclosed, or the enclosed areas?
Being the, it would still continue to be municipal, the township would be responsible for maintaining that section in the future. However, within the specifics of that new updated report is what we would follow. So a lot of that gets placed back onto the landowner, again, with that increased cost of having a pipe versus an open ditch.
Any questions?
No, that was really my, my concern, Deputy Mayor Dencham addressed that would be a potential for future maintenance on that, not so much the production. Other than there occurring all the costs now, but if you need to get in there for repairs, if that was gonna be a liability, that would then fall back on us. But as, as I'm understanding it, that the formula would kind of be updated at that point to say that those additional costs will still go back to, to the landowner.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. And in regards to comment, concerns, is the process gonna fall through now with Monica and Shade Groups moving forward? Or anybody, or has already been, that wouldn't have already been addressed as far as all the farmers or the land that touches that, that drain?
We're not there yet. Right now, we're at step one, just bringing it to council to make this direction to proceed. This is part of a public process, so the other owners in the watershed will be notified and invited to an onsite meeting. And then eventually, when this report's finished and gets brought to council, they'll also be invited. So definitely public process, public input, but we're, we're still months away from that.
Good, any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, motion is carried. 9.4, the integral regulations in regards to mandatory certification.
That the council of the Corporation of the Township of North Stormont receives a report, Fire 06-2025, from the fire chief as an information report regarding OREG 34322 mandatory certification requirements. And further, the council approves sending to the Honorable Doug Ford, Premier of Ontario, outlining our support for OREG 343-22. While requesting timeline flexibility and an exemption for experienced volunteer firefighters who are not included in the original grandfathering provisions. In order to ensure fair and effective implementation for rural fire services. Moved by counselor, or moved by Deputy Mayor Dencham and seconded by Councilor McDonnell.
Thank you, so the questions starting with Deputy Mayor Dencham.
Yeah, well, first, thank you for pulling this together. It's so important, and I think it's the right thing to do. I would, I'm wondering whether or not we should even be a little bit stronger in that letter, in the sense that, kind of drawing a bit of a picture as to what is likely to happen if we don't get the exception. So I've drafted a few words here and just to, to kind of put in there, cause we're not really saying that, you know, not providing this exemption will risk losing dedicated volunteers with combined hands-on experience of X years, whatever that is. It'll create immediate shortfall of experienced firefighters, it'll create a heavy cost burden to install new firefighters. And when backfilled, will create a high proportion of new and inexperienced firefighters in the field. And that will ultimately create an unnecessary and avoidable risk to the public safety and welfare. But I would like to kind of draw a little bit of picture, you know, if we could, in that letter to the minister to say, we're not just asking for an exemption. If you don't give us an exemption, here's what the public is gonna suffer if, if council or the fire chief think that's appropriate.
Before I add my two cents, so I don't deny so that the, the training is, is, as we move forward, is needed. I think it's the way to go. The, the issue here that I brought up and we've had discussions is we have existing firefighters that this course of certification, 101, 102, or 01 and 02 is, I think it's 300 roughly hours, I think, combined all of the, so it's a big ask. And you get a firefighter that's got eight or 10 years, that's also has, a family to raise also have, and they feel like the experience that they've gathered in those years, they're there, these are guys you don't want to lose. And to gather that in, that experience is, even with your certification, there is still the benefit of having that hands on. So it's something that I support, that's why it was added to make, to make them aware, the challenges that if we do lose those, it's for small communities, we don't replace those every day. So, so it's, it's not, it, it's tough to, to maintain the level of numbers of firefighters we want on our teams. The second part is, and I think it was brought back, is also the financial aspect of where the legislation is increasing on the demands and the, which I understand you want the safety of our firefighters, of the people. But at the same time, when we have a small municipality of 7, 800 people for a fire department, and the complexity of trying to maintain and is, is, is very hard to absorb. And for the ministry to just keep, I'd say, adding certain things is good, other things is, we need help, we need funding. So it's, it's something that we're not the only municipality requesting it. It's out there and the word is, is for both aspects, saving our guys, but at the same time, the cost. I see Fire Chief Goochi just turned her mic on, so do you have anything to add?
I just have one good piece of news, is that conversation can be held on September 24th when we have the kickoff. The deputy fire marshal will be in our area, and he's a deputy fire marshal of training and certification. So maybe there's questions that he'll be able to answer, and since you're attending, sir, I'll make sure that he has a few minutes. But yeah, regardless, he'll be there to be able to answer questions if that's the case. In the meantime, the letter will be sent on, on your behalf.
Very much. So maybe we can have the discussions of, as Deputy Mayor Dencham mentioned, I don't have it in front of me cause my computer went. So it's something I'd have to relook at just to get a feel, but it's something that, just to make them aware that the concern is there. It's not just a, an easy light ask, it's something I think that we have to be a little bit of a, the message getting across. So, Counselor Bajelli.
I'm okay with that. I, I think that if we were making significant changes like that to the tone, that we would, we should be deferring it and looking at those final things. The language goes a long way when you're sending messages to elected leaders. So forcefulness is one thing, but trying to dictate to them is another as well. So I, I have no problem if we want to reword it so much so, but I would, I would appreciate that being deferred if we were gonna do so, and then see a final coffee before agreeing to send a letter like that to the premier.
Through the chair, if I may, the, the wording was strategic, and it is, it is mirroring other townships' content. I do see merit in what the deputy mayor is saying. I also think we have to be cautious in the approach we take, and I believe the current wording is worded strongly enough that it gets our point across, and it indicates council's intentions and requests. But I'll leave it to council to determine if they wanna, if they wanna change it to a more strongly worded letter, and we can bring that back.
To Counselor Bajelli's point, I think I don't want to delay this. I'd like to move, move on this and get this out, so go ahead.
I just wanna make sure that we understand that the, the numbers are limited. It's a very small number compared to the group. We have seven members that would be exempted if that were the case. Are they strong members? Absolutely, do they have their? were the case. Are they strong members? Absolutely. Do they have their level ones? Yes. Can, did they, should they continue? But I just want to make sure that you understand that currently we only have seven members. Two members have chosen to not renew at their, they wouldn't rewrite or anything else. So regardless, I just want to make sure that the level of eighty people is done, almost at ninety percent now. But there's only a few that are, would be affected by this.
But I think one station would be affected more, which if it's four at one station, you're talking twenty percent.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a one station, exactly.
Seeing that, no further questions, all in favor of as is. So let's get this on. Thank you. Motion is carried. Moving on to nine point five, the feasibility of cost investigation for water meters.
That the council of the township of North Stormont receives Public Works thirteen dash two thousand twenty-five and direct staff to investigate the feasibility and estimate cost of implementing water metering within the municipality as recommended in the two thousand and twenty-four Water and Wastewater Master Plan. Moved by councillor McDonald and seconded by Deputy Mayor Denham.
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead.
So I'm fine with staff doing some homework, but if, I'm not clear as to what, are we looking to hire a consultant to do some investigation on this one? Because I've done a little bit of homework myself, just digging into what some of our sister municipalities have. I think we use per capita, a comparable amount of water per, per house, if you will. And the, the cost, how much we charge, is comparable to most municipalities. I think there's one that's lower. I think North Glengarry is a little bit lower, but North Dundas were comparable in terms of how much we, we charge. So the question is, what are we buying ourselves? For me, I'm not sure, that's, if I, I went back into the previous report, and it's just short of a million dollars we would have to invest to put water meters in. Well, it said two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Finch, two sixty for Moose Creek, and four fifty for, in Chrysler for the master, master water plan. Anyhow, those were the numbers that were in the, was it RV Anderson?
Right, RV Anderson.
It was in the RV Anderson report at those values in there. So that's what I, that's what, where my reaction, I guess, is coming from. If we're going to spend a million dollars and put a million dollars on to the users of the water again to meter their water, and we're already at the average, what are we buying?
Being one of the only municipalities locally that don't have meter system, what we're buying is, your pricing is, I did get pricing, not officially a budget pricing, and, and it's lower, a lot lower than that. I can have a presenter here. The systems locally are basically supplied with a manufacturer that manufactures the meters completely themselves, and other municipalities have bought into that. Other ones are upgrading to the new, like, the new meter system where it's more cost efficient to, basically to read the meters. What we're, we're working at is basically conserving water, where if a tower is going to be seven million dollars, new wells, new plants, all this, we're talking a lot of money where there's multiple ways that you can introduce basically systems in the building department, in new infrastructure, conservation. Whenever I first took over this, we didn't have to conserve water. Now we have developers that we can't give them the quantity of the development because we don't have the water supply. But there's, there's facts and proofs of how much you can save in consumption, and this system is a user-pay system. A single person in the house is paying the same as someone who is using four times the water, which, and you have full control, it's quite simple to control. It's a user-pay system. So if you want to abuse the system, you pay. And if you, if you're not, you conserve your own money for the value that you're doing. But overall, it's proven to conserve water consumption, which will increase our capacity to build more houses on the systems that we have. And that, and like I said, it's, but it's also proven that we can monitor the systems. We cannot allow the infrastructure of houses that will tell us that they're wasting water, they have a leaky toilet, something's leaking, you're going to get a bigger bill, without even, I mean, we don't have to go door-to-door. We can pick this up, fifteen minutes, they can pick up all of Chesterville and be downloaded, once they go back to their program. And then, and so you have a trend there where if, if someone is, we had places where they, I won't say where it was, the basin was full of water. They had a water leak, nobody lived in there, nobody had a clue. So we can't monitor that from our, our system unless we know what is going out there. And we, and with the meters, you can actually determine the consumption.
Yeah, I get it conceptually. And so maybe to the motion, if we're not paying tens of thousands of dollars to a consultant, if you guys are going to do the homework.
I'm doing the whole thing.
Perfect. Okay, then, then I'm, I'm fine with that.
No, no, it's, and I can actually have, because North Glengarry is going upgrading, and, and so it's, I won't say the company, but just until I let you present it to you guys to see. But it's a cost recovery formula that they said you can cost recover in two to five years, two to four years.
Yeah, and so if, if we could include in some of the homework comparisons to some of our neighboring municipalities.
The company does this for a living.
They also sell it, so.
Yeah, they also sell it, but they also sell every.
You want to be careful not to get a sales pitch, I guess, is really what I'm.
No, but they also sell to every municipality around us. And, and everybody has gone through several different companies and found out down the road that the supplier is, is, is a good supplier. We don't, we don't have, they don't have to fight. They got good warranty programs. Like it's on a meter, it's a ten-year replacement free, and then another ten years of a percentage decrease on the replacement. So.
That can come in the report, I think, tonight. We're looking at identifying. So I'll look on this side. If there's a question, then I'll go to.
No, just, just a comment. And again, speaking in the same vein as the deputy mayor, I, I have no problem supporting a feasibility study, as long as it's not going to be costing us dollars for a consultant to come in and write this for us. But then I would, I would hope that there are comparisons, as if we would be looking to, to, to put out a tender for anything else. So just because I need to buy a car doesn't mean I'm going to get I M D to give my, give me the only pitch. The onus is on us to look around, regardless of what our neighbors are doing as well, to get some comparisons so that we have a, you know, a well-rounded view of it.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm totally in support of doing this. The finance department has been getting a lot of inquiries and complaints about people who are a one-family unit, or sorry, a two-person family unit versus a five-person family unit paying the same. Not only that, you take a look at the commercial entities that are paying the same. So the person who's paying, who's got a two-family dwelling, and you have a major business, say it's a car wash, for example, like water consumption is not the same. So I think these, the water meter would provide equity and also provide some accountability to the users of the system. So they'll fix the leaks if they're paying for the leaks. I think it's a great, I think it's a great endeavor to take.
The amount of people that, or municipalities that do have the, the meters. Now, we had meters, I'm not sure about Moose Creek, we had meters in Chrysler. Is there an advantage where those meters, if they were removed, the connection is there to, it's already splice ready to accept? Is that something that you can elaborate on?
Yes, I was, I was talking to some, the meters that we had, they were back in ninety-five, when they were introduced and that, is not the technology as two thousand twenty-five. Back then, you had to have a reader meter, you had to go to everybody's house, read the meter, then go back, do the calculations of what the consumption. Now, it's a program that you're basically, like I said, they do Chesterville in fifteen minutes, drive around the streets, pick up all the readings, and there's a program that downloads all the consumptions. And then it's just a matter of, same as, be a costing, however the finance and council wants to do, a costing of a cubic meter that's going to be charged. And it's, it's not as time-consuming and labor-intensive as it used to be. And basically, I also talk there, looking at local contractors, plumbers, to actually, because the, the programs out there where they come in and they take the whole system over and, and do it all. But I, I think the biggest problem with that is, is for them to get access. If we, if we say, I did some comparison with the prices that they were charged for connections, to comparison with our plumbers estimated cost-wise, and it's pretty well the same, I think would be more feasible and more receptive for our taxpayers to have the local employee in the company go into their house and, and do the job if we go ahead with this. So there's ways that we can, you know, it, it, it's, it's not, like I said, it's, it's not a lot of work for me, because it's so much knowledge out there today on, on what's going on.
If I could just, through the chair, and should that, that internal report warrant or support further review, we would certainly follow the procurement processes. It would not, would not be single source. So there would be a, a public process to obtain a vendor. It would be done at both people.
And to the consumption, the people will want, that, that want to reduce their water bills can reduce their, their water intake. So you, I'm sure, will see, and the people that can't, well, will pay what I think they should be paying. So right now, the advantage is to the person that is using a lot of water is better off on the system that we have now with no meters. So I think it'll balance out to, to at least grant the feasibility study, especially if we can do it in-house and, and get.
And again, your comment on businesses, I agree a hundred percent. That is the one thing that, in my notes beforehand, I was saying, that's something I think we should be doing, businesses. And so we'll have to see what the, the cost consideration is, because it's one thing to save, save water. The other thing we'll have to do is figure out what's the right price point, because we don't, we need the money to be able to support the infrastructure. So we have to be careful that we're somewhat cost-neutral in order to continue to generate the revenue necessary to support the system for the long term, while, again, more fairly treating different places.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just on that same note, built into those self-sustaining budgets for water and sewer, you can always have a transfer to reserves. So your, your bottom line is still going to be zero, but your rate will, will reflect that kind of forced savings to keep infrastructure up and running.
We're not going back. So we need to maintain what, what the number is, and at the same time, but all that we're looking at doing is to balance out where the, the use is and where it's not. Because I understand if you, especially lately, it's a big thing, six-unit semi-detached. Well, you're looking at six units, rounded up at five, I know it's wastewater and water, but say for both, a thousand. Well, now you're looking at six, or some of them are just a small bachelor apartment, one little bedroom, and that's where to identify where the use is, I think would benefit, benefit. But at the same time, we have to balance it to maintain the revenues that is required and not, and that will be through our analysis and getting that done.
Also, also should be noted is, is directly related to the sewage. And, and, and you turn around, we can also look at the actual consumption and the, and the usage, and we can, it's multiple things that could be done to delay infrastructure investments, which is in the millions, that we could get more development and, and actually build the systems that is more feasible to do with bigger developments on, or bigger infrastructure upgrades.
Perfect. So with that said, any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor of bringing the report forward. Motion is carried. So going to sales of surplus land, item nine point six.
That the council of the township of North Stormont declares roll number zero four one one zero zero nine zero zero four three one nine zero zero point zero zero zero, vacant land on Union Street in Borough of Ontario, surplus lands and directs administration to sell the property as per council's direction. Moved by councillor McDonald, seconded by Deputy Mayor Denham.
Thank you. So I have something to say, but I'll let members around the table speak. Councillor McDonald.
Is it zoned residential? What is it being sold as?
Through the chair, it's zoned residential, I believe, at the time, currently. And that's the lot immediately adjacent to the former township office at fifteen Union Street, and there was always an intention to have the lot sold. And we did have an appraisal done at the same time as we got the appraisal done on the office space, so we could prepare ourselves for the sale.
So maybe speak, we, we, we kind of have that same thought. Great minds think alike. So no, my thought is, I'd maybe, right now, just to put it out there for the sake, to put it out there, and, and somebody coming in, and I'd rather maybe sit and see where there might be value with, with an opportunity beforehand. And, and then, so I'm not sure if that makes sense. It's just that with the building here, it possibly, so in the next year or so, if they're looking at, maybe there'll be something that would benefit us better than just unloading to somebody else. So I'd like to see a bit of a vision and not just unload the.
Yeah, I, I'd kind of like to see what's going to happen with the old building at some point, because I don't think, and I, I have no information on this, I'm speculating. I, I don't think South Nation is going to hang on to that for any length of period of time. I think they're using it to fill a gap in the interim while they figure out what they're going to do long-term. So depending on what happens there, I, I think it'd be better just to hold off and hang on to that property for now, because potentially, we could get a better deal once, once that property is, is purchased, and the future owner will, will understand what's going to happen with it. I think it's, I don't see an urgency in, in selling it right now personally, and I think we may have a better, better opportunity in the future.
You want to, I've been, my view, again, as I'm saying, is if there is an opportunity for us to say, hey, that may be with, to the benefit of the municipality. I'm not talking about dollars. I'm, I'm just talking about if there's, right now, we're just unloading for the sake of saying, hey, we have surplus land. I'm just kind, it's not going anywhere, it's there for us. And the opportunity would be possibly to identify maybe a need, that then we could say, hey, this, this is something. And it, so we have a bit more say in what, versus just unloading, and then it's, it's open market to anybody to do whatever they want, which might not be, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I would tend to agree. I don't think we're in any big rush to do so. It's not as if that land is going to lose value. There may be a potential in the, in the coming years, if there is a future sale of that, of that property to, to someone else that's looking at doing a little bit bigger of a, of a project. And if that is sold at the time, and they are of the understanding that there is an additional parcel of land beside, which may be available to you, that may be, that may put us in a situation where someone would then be approaching us with a lucrative offer without us having to go just shop for land.
And just having the discussion of this tonight might spur where, at least now, we're kind of listening in on what's going on instead of just, go ahead, councillor McDonald.
Another option to consider would be approaching HAVDAP for humanity, but donating the property to build an affordable home. And they had said that they prefer service lots, and I know they, they came here, and we kind of said, we don't have a bunch of municipal service lots sitting around. This, this would be one if they were willing to This would be one if they were willing to work on a well and septic basis, where we could try to support that. And we know, we know for the next few years, things will be tight, and we may want to consider that. But I also know that we had costs building this building, and we need to make sure that we're able to, you know, recoup as much as we can. So I know that's a bit of a pull and push, but I thought I'd bring it up, because I remember the presentation from the young lady when we were in Berwick, asking about municipal lots, and this seems like one that could be a candidate, and perhaps that's an option that should be considered.
Any further questions? So maybe reread the motion and just to clarify how it's.
That the council of the township of North Stormont declares roll number oh four one one zero zero nine zero zero four three one nine zero zero point zero zero zero. Vacant land on Union Street in Berwick, Ontario as surplus lands and directs administration to sell the property as per council's direction.
So the motion's on the table, all in favor? And motion is defeated. Anyone oppose? Moving on to the funds transfer.
That the council of the township of North Stormont approves the transfer of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand from the general operating budget, sorry, operating bank account to the water and sewer reserve bank account. Moved by Deputy Mayor Dencham, seconded by Councilor McDonald.
Can you explain that, because I was scratching my head. Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I believe you remember during our audit, there was talk that we have on our books as such, we have reserve funds with dollar amounts in them, but our actual physical bank accounts don't necessarily match them, because they're sitting in our operating account. So the auditor's suggestion at that point was to start moving funds from our operating to start getting the bank accounts to equate to what's on paper. So that's three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, which is kind of found money at this point in time. So if we could move those to the water and sewer physical bank account to bring that balance up slightly, I think that would be the wise way to go, especially with the fact that we have approximately one point seven, we have to contribute towards that Hughes Grant project in Moose Creek. So this is a start, we're keeping our auditors happy, and at the same time, we are getting those reserve bank accounts up. There's going to probably be another report similar to this coming closer to the end of the year to see what other funds we can move to those bank accounts.
So that money, is it tied directly to water and sewer?
Yes, it is.
So it's not where we're pulling out from here and there, it's money that's specific to, why would it be sitting outside of the regular water and sewer?
Three hundred and fifty-seven was found, it was for the sale of the other property, so it hasn't been designated to go anywhere. It's just sitting in our operating.
My question though, the sale of the property.
Correct.
I thought that water and sewer were an entity on its own, that we cannot take.
Correct. But on paper, on the physical bank state, or not bank statements, audited financial statements, it is saying we should have two point one million dollars in a water and sewer reserve, which is the bank account. The bank account is not reflective of two point one, it's reflective of one point three, I said one point one right now. If I move the three hundred thousand, it goes to one point four. I'm just trying to mirror what the financial statements say we should have in that bank account.
And through the chair, I think the mayor is asking, is that an appropriate, we have the authority to take that three hundred and fifty-seven thousand and put it in the water and sewer budget. What we can't do is take money out of that water and sewer budget and buy a fire truck.
Correct. Basically, what it's saying is, we should be taking whatever monies in our operating bank account and moving it to the water and sewer bank account to match the audited financial statements, because that's where it's sitting right now. But we need that money to operate, we need some cash flow to pay bills and things like that. Because if you take a look, at the end of the day, a municipal budget has a balance of zero. But we can't operate on zero, so we have to have cash flow, which is, the monies from these bank accounts are sitting in our operating in order for us to pay our bills as such. In theory, if we move everything out of operating to those other bank accounts, it's in line, it's fine, but that would leave us zero in our operating account. So we're just moving funds from that account, which should be dedicated to water and sewer, to bring it up to what it should be, but also, we are going to have a physical cash outflow for this grant, and we need the funds available to do that.
I'm assuming we probably have a number that the auditor recommended that we should have in public works for equipment there as well, do we not?
It's what is stated on the financial statements versus what is physically in a bank account. That's the difference. So what it's saying on paper, on the audited statements, is what, if you take all of our bank accounts and combine them all into one, like just one account, they match. But the way they're divvied up, they don't match. So the auditor's wanting us to get closer to, if this is water sewer, this is the water sewer bank account. If this is the fire bank account, or sorry, fire reserve, this is the fire bank account. We want them to match better.
Yeah, but I guess what I'm struggling with is the way that the motion is worded is that the money coming from the sale of our old property is going to go into water and sewer. So as somebody who's not on water and sewer and representing those who are not on water and sewer, who pay for their own well, who pay for their own septic system, my understanding was that the water and sewer needed to be self-sufficient in its funding, and although we do have the ability and the right to put additional monies into that, it's like, I have to pay for my own private system, and I have to pay for the public system as well, if I'm understanding the.
Okay, through you, Mr. Mayor. Let's forget about the money that came from the sale of the building. This resolution could simply say, approves the transfer of three hundred and fifty-seven from the general bank account to the water and sewer bank account. That's all it needs to say, and that's what it says. I'm just saying, we have some found money here that I could leave in the general bank account, it can stay there all it wants, but our water and sewer bank account does not match what our financial statements on paper are saying, so we need to bring them back up.
Okay, so we've got newfound money, and we're going to put it into fire. Well, fire service protection is throughout the township, so then it's no big deal what we take. What I'm getting at is exactly where I have my own septic bed and well, and the township's never given me, if we take municipal dollars, which is everybody's, to go towards water and sewer, which is what my question is, are we, I thought, like Steve mentioned, I thought it was, the entity was on its own, the taxpayers on the service pay for the service.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, you're exactly right. But what I'm saying is, on paper, it is saying, our water and sewer reserves currently should be two point one million dollars. What is in our water and sewer bank account is one point one. They don't match. So those funds are sitting in our operating account. They have been earmarked for water and sewer, they're just not where they should be.
So the taxpayers, that money, is that going to be still there, even though we're putting into the water and sewer? Or is it the benefit of the service?
Yeah, I was going to try to enter, because I think I understand, it's just about the cash, like the revenue of the sale is still going to show up as revenue of sale and operating. That revenue, the revenue recorded is not going anywhere. She's just seeing actual cash money that she can put in the bank, that's real money, not.
Correct, not paper money.
I have learned about budgets, and the paper money and the real money, it is very confusing. So it is not funding, the sale of our, our sale is not funding the water sewer.
Correct, it's not, it's just sitting, it's sitting in the general account. So there is, there's one, there's well is two point one, it's roughly one million dollars is sitting in the operating account that belongs to the water and sewer reserve. But if I take the whole million out of that bank account and move it to water and sewer, our cash flow is a problem.
So did the million dollars that are sitting in operations come because people paid their water bill and their sewer bill?
Correct.
Okay, then I'm okay with that.
Just what you last said about, it's just money, and it's, what I'm saying is, I thought you were asking to take.
No, it's just, we happen to have this extra money, and so now it's a good opportunity to move that extra money to get the water and sewer where it should be.
Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor.
Hold on. I have a hard time with it saying the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars coming from the sale of there. Can we, can we change the motion?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it's not in the resolution, it's just in the background.
Thank you, okay. Seeing no further questions, all in favor. Thank you, motion is carried. Moving into our capital budget change of work order, Mr. CEO.
That the council of the township of North Stormont approves report rec fourteen two thousand twenty-five from the Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities to endorse the change of work for a portion of the capital project for arena footage, frontage, and asphalt patching to the replacement of east trough, and further, the council authorize an additional budget allocation of up to five thousand dollars to complete the project taken from the reserve for capital expenditures. Moved by Councilor McDonald, seconded by Deputy Mayor Dencham.
Thank you. Pierre, can you maybe just add, we'll get our public, or our record, if you can just add in the context of.
Yeah, through the chair, very quickly, we noticed the easter off were falling off the arena, so that became more important than doing the frontage right away. So we did a portion of, we completed that work in two phases, because there was some wood damage to the backing of the easter off, so that's got all repaired. So we're the balance of funds, so we're asking for the difference to be able to pave the front of the arena. Right now, roads wet and pulled out tree stump, put some gravel, but it's still going to cause the issue of mud and everything coming into the complex, to the arena, I should say, and we'll use some of the funds we got to do the patching in the parking lot. So there is an additional cost of five thousand dollars, which is a couple alternatives to council to choose, but that's basically what happened is, the easter off became something that wasn't planned, and if we didn't change them, either it'd fall right off. Seeing there was a couple rotten pieces, we got everything fixed, everything is back to solid and safe for the public to be under.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Dencham.
It sounds like the right thing to do, for sure, but where ultimately is the money coming from? Is there a surplus somewhere that we're pulling it from to?
We just transferred it through.
It's three hundred and fifty-two, three hundred and fifty-two.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it's coming from a capital, it's a reserve for capital expenditures, which is a reserve whose purpose is unexpected increase costs of capital expenditures. That reserve has a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in it currently, and it's kind of like a, an emergency, oh my goodness, this is a little costly fund. So it's the perfect reserve fund to use for this additional work.
I'll just add, when we did the work, we put the base in, but once you create, before, what it was ground and grass, but now that we created a walkway for the winter maintenance and for ice removal and all that, to have just stone there and try to use salt, it's going to be even muddier and track more in, and this way it'd be safer. Once, like I said, once you create a walkway, you have to maintain it, and it'd be a high-use area where you could have a step and fall if you leave it go ice.
So any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion is carried. Oh, I guess, thank you. Going to nine point nine in regards to the gate at the Chrysler Boat Launch.
The council of the township of North Stormont accepts and approves report number fifteen two thousand twenty-five from the Director of Parks Recreation Facilities and further authorizes the installation of a gate at the entrance of Chrysler Park via the Boat Launch Access Road in partnership with the South Nation Conservation, with the municipal portion of funding being absorbed through the operating budget. Moved by Councilor McDonald, seconded by Deputy Mayor Dencham.
Any questions? Deputy Mayor Dencham.
How much will this cost to complete?
Well, our portion of the, through the chair, portion for the township would be the four concrete barriers at a cost of five hundred and eighty dollars, and South Nation Conservation will install the gate and pay for the gate.
Okay, so it's about five hundred.
So it's about a thousand dollar.
Perfect, thank you.
If I can add with regards to the infrastructure that's going in with the grant that was successful last year or two years now, we had the accessibility dock that was put in for being accessible. I think those alone, when the air pulled out, last thing you want, they're nice aluminum infrastructure, and I think having the gate for at the time of year where you can just kind of block that off, I think is beneficial for the cost that we're looking at.
Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion is carried. Moving to, I keep forgetting that one. Moving on to municipal bylaws. Ten point one, bylaw number sixty-six dash twenty twenty-five, to appoint members to the agricultural committee.
Be it resolved that bylaw number sixty-six two thousand twenty-five being a bylaw to repeal and replace bylaw number fifty-seven two thousand twenty-four to appoint members to the committees, more specifically, the agricultural committee for the township of North Stormont, be read a first, second, and third time, pass, sign, and sealed this ninth day of September two thousand twenty-five. Moved by Deputy Mayor Dencham, seconded by Councilor McDonald.
Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion is carried. Moving on to our bylaw number sixty-seven dash twenty twenty-five in regards to road naming bylaw.
Be it resolved that bylaw number sixty-seven two thousand and twenty-five being a bylaw to repeal and replace bylaw number forty-three oh three, and to confirm the names of the roads and streets within the township of North Stormont, formerly the township of Roxborough, the township of Finch, and the village of Finch, be read a first, second, and third time, pass, sign, and sealed this ninth day of September two thousand and twenty-five. Moved by Councilor McDonald, seconded by Deputy Mayor Dencham.
Any questions? It was discussed earlier, seeing none, all in favor? Motion is carried. Moving to item ten point three, bylaw number sixty-eight dash twenty twenty-five in regards to marriage license appointment.
Be it resolved that bylaw number sixty-eight two thousand and twenty-five being a bylaw to repeal and replace bylaw number oh five two thousand twenty-three, and to appoint a marriage license issuer and deputy marriage license issuer, be read a first, second, and third time, pass, sign, and sealed and open council this ninth day of September two thousand twenty-five. Moved by Councilor McDonald, seconded by Deputy Mayor Dencham.
Thank you. So we're going to get Aiden a little white chapel. And maybe work on your sideburns, maybe work on your sideburns, yeah. Any discussions? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion is carried. Moving on to our correspondence, item eleven point one to eleven point six, Mr. CEO.
Be it resolved that the correspondence is listed as items eleven point one to eleven point six on the agenda be received. Moved by Councilor McDonald, seconded by Deputy Mayor Dencham.
Any comments? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Dencham.
Question, did we already put a motion in place similar to the resolution North Glengarry did about the blue box program? I think I'd like to if we don't, but I seem to recall we may have already done that.
I don't believe we did. We've certainly had this come before council before. The reason why I put it on a second time, traditionally, council has directed administration not to duplicate motions from other townships, but because it's one of our local partners, I felt it prudent that we should put this back on the agenda, just to make sure that North Glengarry motion was seen. I do not recall us doing a motion. Could you recall that, Blake?
No, we have a waste management working group, and, sorry, I didn't catch on to this, but if I believe I'm correct, without seeing the whole correspondence, I never read it, so if you want, we can just turn around and get back to, because what, certain municipalities are presenting stuff as SD and G as a group, so we're not individually doing the same thing. And North Glengarry was, they presented a resolution for this, where our group is going to follow through with, because it was a, it was, let me think now, it was, oh, the question is that you could respond to with the process and the changing, because in two thousand twenty-six, things are changing. So across Ontario, different recycling or waste management in the municipalities are stating facts that why, basically like this, why is business going to be eliminated from recycling? Like. You. Like, why are we eliminating, and why are they gonna be, have to pay their own costs and all this? So I can get, we have a meeting next, I think it's Wednesday? I can get, we have minutes and all that, I can get more on this and take it back to council and...
So through the chair, if I can inject, so essentially, Blake, you're trying to be more efficient, and you're suggesting that the SDG working group can put forward a suggestion to the county council?
Oh, no, we're going straight to, to, who's running it now? RIPA is running the recycling, and then the government privatized it, so we're going right to the, the people that government's hired to look after the program through the contractors, so...
My question, so why, like, I mean, North Glengarry sits on the waste management group, so why are we not all in as that group to be looking at versus one motion coming?
I can get clarification on this. I know Tim was, was the lead on a certain thing, and I can get clarification on exactly what this was about, because like, like I said, I didn't read it, so...
And through the chair, just to reiterate, this is not the first time we've seen a motion like this. There's been other townships in Ontario that have put forward the same motions, which we have had on external correspondence. I just felt it prudent because it was from our neighbor.
But, so, maybe my suggestion would be, if the CAO wants to take this offline with Public Works superintendent, and if you feel it fit, bring it back to the next meeting for, with a suggested motion. You okay?
Yes, and I can definitely get more clarification on it, and as a SDG, CD or Cornwall municipalities, we're presenting as a group to be more transparent as, okay, we got sixty-five thousand, a hundred and some thousand people that are saying the same thing on what, you know, you want to change, and we don't agree with some of the changes.
Any other questions on our correspondence? Seeing none, all in favor of accepting them? Motion is carried. Moving on to our unfinished business, fourteen point one in regards to backyard hen's draft bylaw.
That the council of the township of North Stormont receives the updated backyard hen bylaw for information purposes and directs staff to incorporate changes as directed by council. Moved by deputy mayor Dencham, seconded by councillor McDonald.
Any questions or comments, starting with councillor McDonald?
I can start, and if my co-ag member wants to join in. We held a meeting here at the township where we invited some of the local producers to come and speak to us as your representatives on that agricultural committee, so we're reporting back. We did have a great conversation with the owner of Rocky Hill Farm. You know, he has about, I think, ninety thousand birds currently, ninety thousand chicks, I think additionally.
Yes.
He is in the process of investing, I think, eight or nine million dollars in brand-new barns that he's building, actually just across the road, so not in our township, but still adjacent to the village of Chrysler. There are other large-scale producers in our township as well that, that have significant numbers of birds, and as an agricultural committee, we feel that the risk of outright allowing this kind of practice in the villages would not be supporting those large-scale producers, and would introduce far too much risk from bird flu, even if there were animal welfare standards, et cetera, so, you know, we could get into depth more on it, but our job as the ag committee was really to, to talk with everyone and give a perspective direction to council from our committee, and I felt that the direction from our committee was not to permit, outright permit these types of keeping of animals within the village limits, not within a three-kilometer, a five-kilometer, just not at all. And maybe Charles wants to add to that.
Yeah, actually, I was just gonna touch on what you just said at the end, the three-kilometer range, which would be like absolutely no chickens, they're actually in discussions with the large-scale producers, that's actually being bumped up to five kilometers, which would in result, pretty much take out all of the villages in this. Pretty much agreement to not go ahead with it.
Deputy Mayor Dencham.
Yeah, I agree. I think, to me, coming from a different angle, and I've said this before, it was really a nuisance issue that brought this to, to the forefront in terms of disturbing neighbor, either through roosters or through chickens loose and running on neighbors' property, that, that's what it was for me. I know there's other issues that people sometimes bring up, which is fine. So to me, I'm not sure that the bylaw itself would buy us anything. Our current means of enforcement, which I agree with, education first, and I'm not suggesting we change how we enforce right now either, but I just, I see it adding potentially a whole lot more bureaucracy and not necessarily buying anything. So we've seen this a number of times now, so my hope is that, you know, I'm not going to support it, and it sounds like it may get defeated, I'm hoping that this can be the end of it, and like I say, I'm not looking for us to change our practices, but, but yeah, I'd be perfectly happy to, to vote on this one last time.
And through the chair, I just want to be clear that the current zoning restrictions do not permit chickens in village settlement areas. If there is a complaint, we are certainly reactive, not proactive, we do not have the bylaw resources to be proactive on these, these issues, but if there are complaints and it is validated, we would, of course, work with the property owner to obtain compliance within reasonable timeframe, but there is no flexibility, it's, if, if the chickens are confirmed to be on the property, they will have to be removed with an unagreeable timeframe satisfactory to the, to the township.
Thank you. So in that, I, the motion is on the table, maybe just reread?
That the council of the township of North Stormont receives the updated backyard hen bylaw for information purposes and directs staff to incorporate changes as directed by council. I will indicate that if it's defeated, then the bylaw will, of course, not be introduced, and the situation will remain as is.
If that's all clear, the motion's on the table, all in favor? And motion is defeated. Thank you, so moving on, there is no new business. Our scheduled next meeting will take place September twenty-third at six o'clock. We have on the September twenty-fifth, a fire service committee meeting at six thirty, as well as our October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, regular meeting at six o'clock as well. In regard to the coming events, I don't have my, I'll go through the past events first, so we did, I participated at the taste fest that took place in Moose Creek on the weekend, which was very well-attended. We, we had a lot of good time. They also had a barbecue event at the Chrysler Hall that I went and had a bite to eat. There was a little friendly competition of rib cooking, also in regards to Chrysler. On that note, let me see if I forgot, so Avonmore has their UCA night, door opens at six thirty, game starts at seven on September twenty-sixth, and it's fifteen dollars per player. Bingo is every Wednesday in Chrysler, starting at seven, door opens at five thirty. The wine tour is being held on September thirteenth, so it's a hundred and fifty-five for, per person for registration, which is done online, and our community supper is at the Chrysler Hall, is, is this the first one, Pierre, of the monthly, so this takes place September nineteenth, which is monthly hosted this month by the Chrysler Friends of the Library. Moving on to September twentieth, there's a tailgate party, I'm not sure if there's still tickets available, going into the red-black game, and last, and again, there's always Facebook to look. Finch, again, Finch Community Centers only has where you look on their Facebook page. Monklin Community Center, September thirtieth is their event planning meeting, and October second is the Hundred People Who Care fundraiser event that will take place. So for those of you listening, or any members of, of council, if you want to put your, your name down as, as one of the hundred people who cares, reach out to, or I think it's online, or you can reach out to one of the organizers. Last, Moose Creek is hosting their baseball tournament on September twelfth to the fourteenth, which is coming up, I believe, this weekend, and then September twentieth is the club's Optimist event. So it's good to see the stuff going on in our communities, for the people to participate, and any chance members of council have to go and support is always appreciated. Moving to closing remarks, I have one that was requested by our partners at the counties, so I guess Blake would know more of this, but there's the AORS provincial safety truck rodeo that takes place, so they had the local safety truck rodeo that took place, and now we have Isaac Barr from the United Counties of SDNG that has qualified to move on to the provincial, which will take place on September twenty-fourth at the Beckwith Rec Complex in Carlton Place. So again, congratulations to, maybe, Blake, is that something, did municipal employees ever participated in this?
We have, that'd be four, we have volunteered for, basically for, I'm lost tonight, basically volunteering to help organize it and judging and stuff like that. It's totally up to the operators if they want to do that themselves. I did send a few before, but I mean, this is right through our district, and it's totally voluntary by the operator if they want to go and drive. It's basically, it's a snowplow course that they drive, and they have to maneuver, and we were also talking at the road superintendent directors meeting about maybe sending someone to the, Canadian one is in Quebec City, I think, this year, who actually won our, our district, and they said, well, maybe that would be a good thing to, county council or whatever, want to send him, it most likely be more of a costly affair than a one-day event, you know, you gotta get there and whatever. So it's of interest for whoever wants to take place, and it's not, we have been involved, we have been volunteers at it, not as often do we actually have an operator that wants to go do it.
That's good. As my role as new warden coming in, I'm gonna realign that, trying to get his, naming Isaac, will be redirected to take care of County Road Nine. Yeah, and I'll have him strategically, no, so that's good to hear, and again, congratulations to, to Isaac. So moving on to, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I just wanted to congratulate the village of Monklin for Corn Fest, their second annual Corn Fest, and celebrating the hundred and fortieth anniversary, it was nice to see people out there, and also, congratulations to our North Stormont baseball team from the, the tournament. It was, it was a very fun day, seeing some staff members and getting to play, and we really took it to North Dundas, which was great, in our final game, and we were the only team to successfully complete a triple play in, in the tournament, so we may not have won, but...
I did not play, I did attend to go and, and watch. I gotta say that the facility with two diamonds in Moose Creek is exceptional to host this kind of tournament, there's the six municipalities plus the county, so there's seven teams, and it turned out to be, I think, a nice sunny day and a great day for, for staff to, to have an afternoon of pleasure, barbecue, and play ball. With that said, I, we do not have any closed session, so moving to ratification confirming bylaw.
Be it resolved that bylaw number sixty-nine two thousand twenty-five being a bylaw to adopt, confirm, and ratify council's actions at its regular meeting on the ninth day of September two thousand twenty-five, be read a first, second, and third time, passed, signed, and sealed in open council this ninth day of September two thousand twenty-five. Moved by councillor McDonald, seconded by deputy mayor Dencham.
All in favor? Motion is carried, and adjourned.
Be it resolved that this regular meeting adjourned at seven forty PM, moved by deputy mayor Dencham, seconded by councillor McDonald.
Thank you, and again, all in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you very much, members of council, and for the people listening in, and everyone have a good night. Thank you.